Awesome. Love to see it.
Hello?
Hi, Amy.
Love to see and beat the...
Hi.
I got you on speakerphone.
The team with all the football boys.
We're going to sign in about a minute or so.
No, 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 no. It's asking you and it's between you and all of us.
I know I brought that question up, are we drafting or are we just assigning? Because I wanted to know where you later rated up the end of it. And then going into the new season, we already know what they're rated.
Okay, that's what I had questions about tonight. Good, thank you. So it will be a short meeting.
Good evening, welcome to the October 17th meeting of the Newmarket Town Council. We begin as always with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag. The United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilor Burns is not able to be here this evening, so I need to ask her a couple of questions so that she can participate remotely. Councilor Burns, are you alone in the room?
Yes, I am.
And could you confirm, please, that you couldn't be here?
Yes, I couldn't be there tonight. I am in Bloomington, Indiana, traveling for work.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we move on to a public forum.
Good evening, I'm Lisa Henderson. I'm a resident of Newmarket, six Maple Crest, and I'm also a Commissioner with the Stratford Regional Planning Commission. And I wanted to take an opportunity to introduce you to Jen Siz, the new Executive Director of Stratford Regional Planning Commission. I'll give you just a little bio of her and then have her come to the platform here. She and I have known each other for some time. I got to know her when she was with the Office of Energy and Planning, and I worked in affordable housing and the field of housing advocacy. And I've known her to be a dedicated public servant who thrives on challenges and is a great people person and connector. So I was thrilled to hear when she took the position with Stratford Regional Planning Commission. She has 19 years of experience in municipal, regional, and state planning, community development, and architectural design. And as the Executive Director of the Planning Commission, she manages their daily operations by providing administrative and managerial direction in the areas of policy formation, budget maintenance, staff resource allocation, and the management of complex planning projects. They are a resource to municipalities. We are one of the outliers of the Stratford Regional Planning Commission, being located in Rockingham County but affiliated with the Planning Commission. And they do important work from local land use programs, technical assistance. And so Jen's vast experience as Senior Planner with the Office of Energy and Planning, and more recently as a Regional Planner at Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, makes her a terrific find for us here in the seacoast region. So I will now turn it over to Jen to say hello.
Thank you to Lisa. Lisa's one of two Commissioners from Newmarket that represent you all and are appointed by you, the Town Council. Peter Nelson is the other representative. He also serves on our Executive Committee. So I've just been trying to make the rounds and get to all 18 communities in our region, just an opportunity to say hello, introduce myself, open up a line of communication with each of our municipalities, and take an opportunity to hear what you're working on, what you're interested in, and how we can be best of service to you as one of our member communities. Just a really short snapshot of who we are as a Regional Planning Commission. Regional Planning Commissions are formed under state statute. As such, we have a couple mandated obligations. We prepare a regional comprehensive plan every five years, a housing needs assessment that's designed to help municipalities with their own master plan. And then we're also there as a resource for you and the other 17 communities in the region. It gives you an opportunity to network with other municipalities, discuss things that might be of common interest to each municipality, challenges you might all be facing, and try and find some solutions collaboratively. We also, as Steve knows, will frequently partner up with our neighboring Regional Planning Commission, so Rockingham Planning Commission. I've worked with the Director from Rockingham Planning Commission for many years. We worked together at National Regional Planning Commission at one point. So we have that good working relationship with our neighbors. Just kind of some of the things that we've done in the recent past here in Newmarket. Staff have worked on updates to your master plan, have worked on stormwater regulations, which I believe we're going to be working with your planner to bring around to the finish line. Also, on the GIS side of things, we've worked on a Sea Rise project, which was looking at vulnerability assessments in the coastal communities. We have a suite of resources online, one of them's MapGeo, a complete set of different GIS data layers that are available across the region, gives you a chance to zoom in on your community, see different things such as environmental characteristics, transportation, and the like. Just a few other kind of big picture things. In addition to serving as a Regional Planning Commission, we also serve as a Metropolitan Planning Organization. That is our transportation functions, and that's a federal designation. Colin is our Senior Transportation Planner. And I think I'll let, give him the podium in a little bit just to say hi and mention a few things that he's working on right now in the transportation realm. I just want to kind of wrap things up on my side by saying, the Regional Planning Commission, it's your Commissioners. So having Lisa and Peter, they are the ones that set policy, set direction for the Commission, and we really rely on them. They also double as our Metropolitan Planning Organization's Policy Committee, which means when we're looking at transportation projects, they're the ones voting to send things up to the Department of Transportation for what our regional transportation project priorities are. And on that end, I'll just kind of put in a plug for our meeting Friday morning, which is our Policy Committee, 9:00 AM. We have the DOT Commissioner coming to speak on what she's working on for this upcoming year and what she's putting together in her budget proposal for the Department of Transportation. So that's a great opportunity to get that one-on-one face time with the Commissioner and have your communities' priorities heard directly.
Sorry, where is that?
It is at our offices in Rochester, 150 Wakefield Street. So I think with that, I'll just give Colin a quick second just to say hello and just mention what we're working on in the transportation world.
Thanks, Jen. Nice to meet everyone. My name's Colin Luntz. I'm the Senior Transportation Planner. Been with SRPC for a little over five years and in the transportation realm for a little over four. So I'll keep this as brief as I can. There are a number of transportation funding programs that can take care of various projects that might want to get, that Newmarket folks might want to get done if it's addressing a safety issue on public roads. There are funding programs for that. And I can go into more detail if you get in contact with me. The one, the big thing in the state of New Hampshire is the State's Ten Year Plan. It gets reorganized, re-updated every two years. The Regional Planning Commissions play a role in projects moving their way up into the State's Ten Year Plan and eventually getting federally funded. So we'll be working on that over the next few months. I've been working with our communities on projects. But related to the Policy Committee, as Jen mentioned, over the next few months, what I'm going to be working with the Policy Committee on is a set of sort of policy directions or issues that the local communities face and that have sort of a regional perspective. And so we make sure that those get to the decision makers at the local, regional, state, or even federal level. So as Jen said, the Representatives of our 18 municipalities are the one that they run the show. And federal legislation says that it's the 18 municipalities, not the staff, that are the transportation side of things. So I want to hear from the communities and make sure that those needs get to the folks that make the big funding decisions and policy and legal decisions and so forth. So I'll leave it at that. And Jen's going to leave cards, and we're a very small office. So call and ask for either of us, and we're there all the time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Can Councillors make comments? Does anybody have any questions or comments at this point? I mean, you were looking for a little bit of interaction, I think.
I have a comment. It's very timely that you're here because later on, I was going to bring up some correspondence that I've received from some of our residents here in Newmarket about some safety concerns, particularly around the school building project and the safety of our residents, mostly our children, who are crossing 108. And there's been a lot of back and forth with the Department of Transportation and a couple of parents. So I can forward some of that information to you guys. I can't make the Friday meeting unfortunately, but I'll definitely forward that information.
Yeah, if it's an email chain, yeah, it maybe, hopefully it's sometimes just a matter of talking to the right person, whether it's the district or, you know, whether it's putting a crosswalk in the right place or it could be as cheap as just signage or a light or...
There were a lot of, a lot of things. It just came to my attention today. And there were a lot of alternatives that were, that kind of went back and forth. So I don't know where the project stands at the moment, where the crosswalk issue stands. Obviously, the school project is happening. But the fact that there's construction and lots of people crossing the street, a busy road, it's 152. And so there's some real safety concerns around pickup and drop off. So I'll pass that along.
Of course.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, I'd just say that on my years on the Council, I've had a chance to see how important your services are to the community. So I think we've, I'm sure we don't use them as much as possible, but we use them a lot. And I think we have a good relationship with Planning Commission. And I think we're, the kind of the big project is there is another go at our master plan now under discussion. We started meeting, having a standing joint meeting of the Town Council and Planning Board every year so that we can sort of, you know, come to an alignment on what the priorities for the coming year. And that was one of the things we discussed at that meeting in September. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'll second that because I was on the Stormwater Subcommittee from the Planning Board. And that was very positive experience for me. You know, it was very clear and helpful to have some of the models and help with that. So, thank you. I did, I don't know the supplies with transportation, maybe, maybe, maybe not. And we haven't really talked too much about it as a Council. It hasn't really come up. But I have noticed a lot of people commenting on traffic, you know, heaviness of traffic starting to really flow through downtown Newmarket. And then, of course, that exacerbates safety issues because people are trying to, it's usually through commuting, and they just want to get home.
I was just coming to, my commute is a mile. I live a mile from the office in Rochester, so I always feel a little guilty when I actually have to drive somewhere when it's commuting times and I realize how much of a rat race it really is. But, so there are programs for congestion reduction. So we can be, we're in a position to help design a project with, you know, maybe multiple communities, including Newmarket. And so that would be, and it would come with a request for making that funding available at the state level as well. So feel free to reach out and if there, you know, we can figure out what the scope of the congestion issue is and see what alternatives are out there.
Yeah, I think the big thing we see, we've talked about it a little bit internally, and we've just come off with it because for some time Newmarket was going to try to put a bike lane. But the funding we had did not make it, you know, make sense. So what you find now is that north of Newmarket on 108, we're seeing a major improvement in the roadway through there and that we're still seeing the end of that construction. South of town on 108 is a heavy traffic area as well. And there's really, it's hairy as heck for bikers and nothing much has happened down there. And nor has it, I don't know how much it's on the radar of the... But it, you know, as we can see continued growth in traffic and development, I don't think it can stay off forever.
I just kind of mentioned two things in connection. We do regular traffic counts throughout the region with the standards set at locations. And so we might have traffic count data and that, we return to the same location every so many years. So we might have that trend data already available for some of those locations where you're noticing increased traffic. If it's not one of our regular count locations, we can send a staff team out and do municipal on any of your local roads or state roads, except for, you know, the big scary ones. We stay off of 16. And then on the bicycle safety, we have a project coming up that's going to be looking at bicycle level of stress on roadways in the communities. It's just, it's a performance metric tool where you can look at and compare different roads and what the perceived level of safety is on various roadways. It's an interesting tool and way to visualize.
Through various circumstances, I'm forgetting the designation of the various highways in the general area here, but we're getting more access to data specifically about congestion. So not just a traffic count, but where the congestion is happening. So we may be able to zero in on some of those areas in specific times of the day.
And sort of some of the hot point on that is, it gets into, because Newfields is Rockingham Regional. And it's that stretch. So it's the, you know, between the two where, and the bridges are tougher. There's no room for bicycles, but they're bicycled on and that, on those railroad bridges at the south end of Newmarket. So I think it's an area to be, if I had to name where in our town, I thought the area to look at. I mean, I went to the last time there was a 10-year meeting here in Newmarket. I was impressed that it can take a long time to come up through the process. So on that basis, we should probably start building a case because it's going to be scary what it's like in a few years. Were you going to say something?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, you know, we did try to work on the bike path with the state. However, we have a bad taste in dealing with DOT and probably will not manage any projects with them anytime soon. When we end up in court over who's going to pay, it's not a good thing. So right now, if the state wants to do a project, that's fine. It just, we would not be working with them at this point in time.
Yeah, but I think that's a little different in terms of monitoring traffic and trying to understand, because at some point, you're going to have to have needed to do all that background. But by the time you probably get to the point where the project gets done, hopefully the suit and everything else will be long forgotten. So anyways, thank you very much. So now I would accept a motion to approve the October 3rd, 2018 meeting minutes, please.
Some of them. Second.
And are there any corrections or comments about the minutes out there? I have a couple. So the first one is a, just a comment. Not that there is any error here, but I, on the section where MS4 is discussed, I did want to just touch on that a little bit because it says that in our appeal, we're, he said that the towns that are, that appealed the MS4 permit process, that the intervening towns, right? In the appeals process.
Yep.
That we, those towns disagree with the EPA about what nitrogen levels were appropriate for Great Bay.
That's partially one of the...
That's one of the things, yeah. And I said at that time, and I'll repeat now, that I think that when we voted about it, we talked very little bit about disagreeing about the science of nitrogen. What we talked about is the Town Council that voted on it, was that the timing of it was very tough because of the way it followed the election and that to preserve our options, we were willing to enter into this appeal process. But there's so much, from my opinion, this is speaking in my opinion and why I'm a little sensitive about this. I think there's a lot of challenging good science that's going on at all levels of government here. And I'm not at all sure that we, that I ever understood what our basis, you know, from what I've been to and what I've heard, I think the science around nitrogen and its impact on estuaries is pretty well established. So I just wanted to make that comment about, not that there's an error in the minutes, but that I think it's not, it doesn't fully come out where I was coming from when I made the comment that I made. And then there are a couple of other things that I have on, let's see, page four, line 124, page four of the overall minutes. I think we're, it says Chairman Pike stated that the Planning Board had set up the Subcommittee for the McAllen Dam. And I don't think that's what I said. It's certainly not anything that happened. What happened, the Subcommittee that was set up by the Planning Board was for looking at, you know, that was looking at some of our proposed land use and some of the, we're specifically reviewing some of the recommendations of the Economic Development Committee. That would be one item that the, that Subcommittee was around. And the reason I was, it was brought up at that time was just that we were talking about when it's, when would you set up a Subcommittee? But it wasn't around the McAllen Dam. And the last thing I have on the minutes is page six. And let's see if I can, six, and that's line 215 on page six. And... He purchased, yeah, it just, it changes the meaning a little bit, but it's really just removal of three letters, the letters where it said, he said that he also purchased composting for his yard. What I purchased was compost, no ing. And that's the only changes I had. Did we, we did have a motion, right? So, okay, I get Boston's base here.
Please call the roll. Councilor Burns.
abstain.
Councilor Finch.
Aye.
Councilor Dumont.
Aye.
Councilor Cast.
Aye.
Councilor Bowden.
Abstain.
Councilor Weinstein.
Aye.
Councilor Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes 5:02.
Okay, we move on now to presentation on the 2020 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Monday, I presented the Town Council pursuant to the Town Charter my proposed budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. I've got a PowerPoint presentation to go over some of the highlights of the budget. And then on October 27th is an all-day workshop to really get into the meat and bones of the budget. First item I always like to do is show some economic indicators for our area. And one of them is the Consumer Price Index and where it is right now. Not surprisingly, the Consumer Price Index has been going up. The United States last year was up 1.7 percent. Now it's up 2.9 percent. In northeast, it was 1.6 percent, and now it's up 2.7. And in the Boston area, which we're part of, it was up 2.2 percent last year, and now it's increased by 3.4 percent. What the Consumer Price Index shows is what it costs for people to purchase the normal things like oil and food. And this is showing what the increase in cost is for the individual. So the cost of living's gone up 3.4 percent in Boston area. The next is the economic unemployment rates. For the United States, last year was 4.3 percent, now it's down to 4.1. The state is at 2.5, and it's up to 2.7, which is minimal. 2.7 for the county and 3 this year for the county. The portions metro, which you remember of, was 2.5 last year, and now it's at 2.4. And for the town itself, it was 1.9 percent. And this year it's at 2.1. However, those percentages are actually negligible. Anything basically below a 3, that could be just a flip of somebody, you know, seasonal employees or part-time employees switching. So it's not, it's almost no unemployment. The next one is an estimate for what our current tax rate would be when we set it this fall. This number is an estimate, I just want to make it, we have not set the tax rate yet. We're estimating the tax rate this year will be $29.26. The biggest part of the tax rate, as always, is the school portion. So roughly about 74 percent of all the tax dollars goes to fund the school. The next portion at 20, about 22 percent is the town. And then finally, the contribution to the county is at 3.8 percent. And this is just a comparison, a five-year comparison of the tax rate. As you can see, pretty much the town is in pretty level here, between $6 and this year will be the highest at $6.41. The reason for the jump in the school, this is the first year bond payment, complete payment for the new school renovations. The other thing is that the assessed value of the town has also increased this year. We're estimating it to be at $762,101. What does this mean? It means for every dollar that we raise in tax, every dollar in the tax rate, we can raise $762,100. Last year, we were able to raise $757,803. This will be the last year of seeing a rate around here because we will be doing our statistical update in the coming year. Every five years, we have to do, what we commonly refer to as a revaluation. Every five years, by the state constitution, we have to do that. And this is our fifth year.
Thousand or million?
Million.
I thought you said thousand, okay.
Million, million is the value, thousands, how much we raise by each dollar. So, the proposed fiscal year budget, I am proposing a budget of $12,222,871 for an increase of .68 percent. The Department's proposed a budget of $12,897,704 or 6.23 percent. And the current budget is $12,140 or $740,734. My budget increase is proposed at $82,137. Enterprise funds will be decreased by $108,096. And all other funds will be an increase of $190,233. The general fund, I'm proposing a budget of $7,864,846. The general fund, I'm proposing a budget of $7,864,846. The special revenue funds, which is the library, recreation revolving, and solid waste, I'm recommending a budget of $1,201,83, and enterprise funds, I'm leaving at $3,156,942. The enterprise fund is water and sewer, since they're self-funding, just that that's paid for through ratepayers, not through tax dollars. Where's the increase going? $30,000 is for economic development consultant, $124,125 the first year of the police contract, and $22,000 is for solid waste contract, and $27,000 is for the recycling contract. So why is there such a difference between mine and the department head budget? Contribution of capital reserves, I'm recommending $550,400, they're requesting $1,097,525. The reasoning behind the reduction in capital reserves is that we've also had a reduction in our surplus, our fund balance. We're currently at $2.4 million. The council budgeted $850,000 to be withdrawn from that to fund capital projects last year, which places that $1,597,000. We are not anticipating a huge difference in revenues from what we've been budgeting to actuals. So our revenues are pretty right on, as well as our expenditures have not been that big of a gap. So we're only anticipating about $250,000 to go back into the fund balance. At 1.5 million, we're at 5.7 percent. Our bottom is 5 percent. Our policy is between 5 and 10 percent. I'm cutting capital, contribution to capital reserves, because this won't impact the operation, the day-to-day operations of the government. It's going to impact projects, but not any services that we provide on a day-to-day basis. So as you can see, they requested for public works, $195,360, I'm funding that at $75,000. Building improvement is requested, $35,222, I'm proposing $15,000. Roadway improvement asked 260, I said 250. Stormwater management, I did propose $25,000. McAllen Dam is $50,000. Fire department requests $159,000, $80, I propose $50,000. Police vehicles at $47,500, I propose $26,000. Police dispatches at $25,470, I propose $10,000. The veteran memorial, I've level funded at $2,000. Master plan at $10,000. The 300 anniversary celebration expendable trust at $2,000. Compensated absences, I'm recommending $10,000. We're having a number of retirements coming up that we're going to have to start paying for compensated out with citizens. The library request at $155,890, I'm recommending $10,400 to be contributed to the capital reserve. Recreation requested $120,300, I recommend it $15,000. So mine will be a decrease over last year's of 32.8 percent, uh, 0.8 percent. And here you can see the difference in the revenue budget. Total last year, we were estimated at $7,437,656. This year, we're anticipating $7,89,248 in revenue. So not too far off, but it's still a dip. And again, that's only because of fund balance, it's not anything else. We're seeing motor vehicle registrations coming in fine, building permits are coming in fine, everything's coming in fine. It's just we've been budgeting to actuals. We knew this was coming, we've seen this in the past few years. So the next slide is an estimate only using data as we have today. Again, this is an estimate, I always give this warning before I give this one. It's the tax impact of the, if the budget were to pass. As we said, I'm recommending a gross appropriation of $12,222,871. You less the revenues and then add overlay, which is for abatements, and then add our war service credits, and that $160,000, so the net town appropriation would be $5,313,623. And you take that by the assessed value, and it would be, the tax rate would be $6.97 for an increase of 56 cents. There are two potential bonds in the impact. Actually, that's not, there's one error on that side, it's not $87 annually. The McAllen Dam, we're estimating the cost of that project at this point in time at $1.5 million. By getting a bond schedule, it was 5 cents in the first year, so if, if the bond were to pass this March, it would be 5 cents, and then the second year, it would be an 18 cent impact, it's a 20-year bond. And water projects, that, that would be going on the rate, not on the tax rate, so that would be a separate issue, that would be just a different, additional revenue on that side. And that is all I have, and just a reminder that, again, the workshop is on October 27th.
Any comments on the, on the presentation?
I know that we're going to go through, obviously go through all the numbers, but just one thing that stuck out to me was, if we are, have the potential to have a bond for the McAllen Dam, why are we putting, why are we contributing to the capital reserve also?
We still need to have some money in there for engineering. There's still some projects wrapping up. I can double check to see why, but, yeah.
You know, look, you know, we don't have to have comments, but look at your last couple of sentences on page four of your report, talking about the CPI. That didn't make sense to me. Main reason for the reduction or small increase in the CPI is due to the falling oil prices in the area?
There should be, there should be an increase.
The increase, the rate of increase is actually, is to some extent accelerating according to the numbers.
Yeah, 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 I'm sorry, I was, there's an error there.
Okay. It's my day to be picky, I guess, but, all right. And department reports, do we, I don't know. Oh, I think there was one, I don't know if we made corrections on that or not, is it just their reports? Yeah, well, have, there was something that were, I think, let me just find that there, because I, I want to make sure I've got it right, that's right, and understand it correctly, but, come on.
Your department?
Just one second. I think it's the clerk. I think she just put the wrong date on. It should be through 6/30/18 and not 9/30/18. And it's on page 35. Oops. Problem repeated, the card's crashing on me, sorry about that. Well, that's okay, if you have to look at that sometime, I think that.
Everything on there says, no, it's, everything is till the September 30th on her report.
Right, but isn't the, the number she's citing, isn't that?
I don't know it.
It's the fiscal year, right?
No, she's.
Maybe I didn't understand it right, if I could get this thing to load up right.
She doesn't, she hasn't changed her report. I mean, it's the same report she does every month.
All right, just one second. Hopefully, it won't crash this now. I guess I better not spin the numbers too fast. Okay, so the, the water and sewer are on a different, a different, they're not on a fiscal year, are they on a calendar year?
No, they're, they're with us, but that's all, that's what they've collected from January 1st.
Okay, I'm not sure what I was saying, then I'll. Taxes total collected through 9/30, again, it's, that's, that's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, good. Sorry about that. All righty, then moving on to, so we, we're going to continue to leave Resolution 2018-19-10 on the table?
Committee.
Oh, committee reports, I'm sorry, thank you. Do we have committee reports?
I have one.
Okay.
Conservation commission met last Thursday. Just a couple points to bring up. One thing we discussed was Chanda Park, and I kind of went back mentioning that the commission could form a subcommittee after our discussion last time, and the commissions agreed to kind of reach out to the town to see if there might make sense for the town to kind of look into helping run or facilitate maintenance on that, because it's a lot of, it's a, it's used as a, essentially a town park, it's different than conservation land, so we're to find if there's some way that the town can help, help out with that upcoming project that will be down the road for maintenance, repair, oversight. We also talked about, we'll be beginning surveys of some of the local conservation areas, and the other thing we discussed was, or that came up actually, there should be a volunteer cleanup day at Heron Point Sanctuary on Saturday, October 27th, same as our budget meeting, from 9:00 AM until noon. So members of the community have already kind of, they've got some numbers ready to go, we're going to open up the gate, and then DPW is going to help with hauling away some of the debris that's down there, so. In anticipation of the gate being installed, once we hear back from EverSource, which I believe should be happening soon, I just haven't got a recent update on that. And that's it.
Okay. Any other committee reports?
Bless you.
No, seeing none. All right, we move on to the amended Resolution 2018-19-10, and as I understand it, we're leaving that on the table.
Yep.
So for that, no vote is required.
Nope.
And there are no nominations, appointments, or elections, so we move on to the Resolution 2018-19-11. We begin with a request to suspend the rules to act on the motion this evening. Would you like to explain that?
Yeah, well, two things. One, I think, because I like the resolution, you don't need to read the entire thing, it's just, second, we are using impact fees, and I do not like suspending rules, I'm going to tell you that right now. But if we do not use these impact fees, we lose them, and department heads should know that they need to come forward beforehand, but I do not want to turn these impact fees back for equipment that we desperately need. So I'm requesting that the council suspend the rule to act on Resolution 2018-2019-11 this evening.
So, seeking a motion to suspend the rules, please.
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay, and is there anybody that wants to make a comment or a question about this? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Council Burns?
Aye.
Council Finch?
Aye.
Council Dumont?
Aye.
Council Cast?
Aye.
Council Bowden?
Aye.
Council Weinstein?
Aye.
Council Pike?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. And the recreation director is here.
Yes, do we?
A motion to approve.
For, first, we need a motion to approve, please, this is 2018-19-11, use of recreation fee, impact fees.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-2019-11.
And we don't need to read the whole thing, just the title only?
I would, just because of the length.
Yeah. Do you need a second?
Yeah, need a second.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, so the, the title of this is, I'll read that and the subtitle of it, so to speak. The resolution is the use of impact fees for specific swing, swing set upgrades, and a, and then below that, it says, release a portion of collected impact fees from the recreation account to purchase two new basket swing-like set apparatus structures and two new toddler parent swings. And with that, Amy, do you want to, any comments at this point?
There is a swing set project we had put in the CIP plan for several years ago to redo the swings. If you're familiar with the swings at the Lelandruff, they're, they're very old, they were built in the 1970s, and in order for them to bring up to code, you're only allowed to have two swings per bay. Right now, those swings have three swings per bay, so just to do an entire replacement of the swings, we would lose total capacity of how many kids could swing. So in looking at that and using impact fees, we're actually looking at some swing-like apparatuses that are very current and in today Dover just put some in their town park, and they are able to carry several children at once, their baskets, and it's great for social play, it's great for children with special needs, it has a type of motion, they are also ADA accessible, whereas a regular swing isn't. So in the notes, we're, by using these swings, and they're a little bit more expensive than the traditional swings, that's why we're seeking to use impact fees, because of the demand of how many children are at the park, especially during summer camp, we need more swings, and to take away swings by doing a straight replacement, we would lose a lot of swings. So what's going on with, what's being paid for these impact fees, currently, the capacity of swings is 10, 10 children, whereas with these new types of swings, the toddler swing actually allows the parent and the child to swing at the same time, or a sibling and a child, so in that case, you increase it. So the impact fees would actually be increasing swing capacity to 23 children instead of 10.
Okay, any questions regarding this?
I'll just comment, I saw those swings when I went on the CIP tour last year, so, yeah, they're in the greatest shape.
So this, this is specific equipment that will go with the full retrofit of the swing, so it's not the entire project, it's just the equipment that will increase capacity per impact use requirements.
Okay, and is it, also, you, you included quotes as well, right?
Yes.
So you picked, you picked somebody, a lowest bidder to.
It actually didn't come as the lowest bidder, it was about $600 difference, and it came down to the type of swings, when you're dealing with different vendors, every swing's a little bit different, and their toddler swing, the one that came in at the lowest quote, was an older model of the toddler swing, and the middle quote, which came in at, here, 22,995, and the other one was 22,330, 22,000. Was it different? It was actually a brand-new model, just rolled out at Nationals this past September, definitely has a larger seat, more comfortable for an older generation, we often see grandparents taking their grandkids to the park, more comfortable for the toddler, just a better quality of swing, and also that particular vendor, New England Recreation Group, they're local, so service-wise, we would be able to get better service, whereas the lowest vendor there, distributor, is in New Jersey, and they were slow to respond to a lot of my email requests, so that is why we're recommending the middle quote of 22,995.
Okay.
I just have a couple comments. So I'm definitely in support of improving the equipment on the playground, I think it's, I think it's due, so I'm glad to see that that's going to be happening. And just to comment on, or on some of Steve's comments earlier, I mean, the impact fees aren't a surprise to us, so I know we get a report, we get a report every month, and I know that that's out there, so I do think that just for planning purposes, as we move forward, making sure we have our eyes on that in the future, this would be.
It, it was supposed to be done in April, but the school and the, so it just, sorry about that.
No, I hear you, but, that's all.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Please call the roll.
Council Burns?
Aye.
Council Finch?
Aye.
Council Dumont?
Aye.
Council Cast?
Aye.
Council Bowden?
Aye.
Council Weinstein?
Aye.
Council Pike?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Just a question about the previous resolution. At our meeting, and I went back and just to look at the minutes quick, we didn't put it on, we didn't lay it on the table.
No, I noticed that on. No, I noticed that on agenda as well. It's on third reading, so it's not on the table. But you can hold it up over again.
So do we, do we, does that require a vote?
No, you're fine. It would, it's a, it's a script, there's there.
Okay. Okay, um, and these are, the rest are just reading and I got to figure it out.
I got to read them.
Sure, go ahead.
Resolution twenty seventeen twenty eighteen dash twelve, authorization to purchase a Ford F-150 pickup. Whereas AutoXs recommends that the truck number three is going to be replaced. And whereas the water department has set aside thirty-one thousand two hundred and sixty dollars in the capital reserve account for number, truck number thirty-seven's replacement. And whereas the truck's scheduled to replace every twelve years. And whereas truck number thirty-seven has been in the fleet for thirteen. And whereas the water department has followed the purchasing policy and received state bid with, uh, from Capone Ford. Now therefore, be it resolved by Newmarket Town Council that it here, does hereby authorize the withdrawal of twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars from the water capital reserve funds and the purchase of a, of a new Ford one, F-150 pickup from Capone Ford not to exceed twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars.
Okay. And, uh, the last resolution to be read, now I have here, is the resolution twenty seventeen eighteen dash thirteen. A preliminary engineering contract for the McIntosh and Tucker Well Treatment Project. Whereas the water department has performed a water build-out study that has identified the town needs to increase its water supply. And whereas the water department has created a twenty-year capital improvement plan. And whereas the water department has been approved for a three million nine hundred thousand dollar loan with twenty-five percent forgiveness from the New Hampshire Drinking Water and Groundwater Trust Fund. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council, does hereby approve the withdrawal of five hundred and four, excuse me, five hundred and four thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-six cents from the water capital reserve funds and twenty-seven thousand four hundred and three dollars and four cents from water impact fees for the McIntosh and Tucker Well Treatment Project. The Newmarket Town Council approves the town administrator to enter into an agreement with Wright Pierce to perform the McIntosh and Tucker Well Project preliminary engineering for the sum of five hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. And, so, other is, now we touched on it before, there is correspondence to the town council. Do you want to make any further comment to that? Or does anybody? Go ahead.
Let me just find it, sorry. Anybody else has anything before?
Anybody else have any, uh, anything to say about correspondence to the town council? Number white page.
So I alluded to it earlier. I was forwarded, uh, a series of emails from, uh, a parent. And I had also, at the same time, today, earlier, uh, received a couple of emails from another parent about the safety of the crosswalk in front of the, um, the junior, senior high school that crosses one fifty-two. And I can speak just on a personal note that I am also, I'm often driving past there at, um, drop-off time. And it's chaos. It's, it's dangerous. I've witnessed that, my husband's witnessed that. And that's what the people who have sent these emails have witnessed. They took out the flashing lights and, um, there's often a crossing guard. Sometimes that crossing guard is distracted, um, and it's not, and that crossing guard isn't always there. Kids are walking across the street. It's just, i- i- and there's a lot of traffic and kids, and there's so much more foot traffic because the kids, because the, the student drivers can't park at the school. So they're parking over on Maple Crest and they're parking, you know, in all these other spots. There's just a lot more congestion. And it's a lot for a driver, um, to keep your eye on early in the morning, you know, at seven-thirty before you've had your coffee. So, and now that, you know, it's getting dark and there's after-school activities. And all of that drop-off activity is happening across the street. So kids are, you know, constantly walking back and forth. I think that it causes, i- it, it has the potential to be a huge liability for the town. Now, I know that it's not our project. It's not the school, I mean, it's not the town's project, but safety ultimately comes back to the town. It's also not a town road, it's a state road. So it's, it's just kind of a mess. So I wanted to bring it to the council's attention. I know that you're aware of the issue, Steve.
Address it, sure.
Yeah, this has been going on probably about two years ever since we installed the original lights. We knew that when they opened up the art classroom across the street, we worked with the school, we installed the beacon that you could hit across the, the street. At the time of getting the second driveway permit, the State Department of Transportation District Six, which covers us, indicated that that, those lights were not permissible and forced us to remove them. We vehemently opposed that and we think it's, just doesn't make sense. They came back with an answer that the options are that we have to have uniformed traffic control devices throughout that area, which would mean potentially installing the same kind of lights at Pond Street, Maple Crest, Maple Street, Packers Falls, and Brant Road, where they're not needed because there's no pedestrian traffic in those areas or they're cul-de-sacs. I could tell you that it's probably about fifteen, ten to fifteen thousand dollars for one of those to put in. We're still working with the state to try to get that one back in. Uh, the chief of police is going to co- contact the Department of Transportation. My other suggestion is, at this point, you're, you're right, it's a state road. So we'd have no control over the regulations there. We would be contacting the state reps as well. The state representatives are the ones who can get, probably get through DOT better than we can at this point. Yeah, because I mean, I could tell you that we, we completely agree with the, the parents, that we do believe that a, the beacon is needed there. We still have one that we could put back in, but we need the state to give us permission to do so. But it's their road, we can't, we have to follow their guidelines.
I, I don't know whether we're discussing other options right now or you're going to...
I, yeah, I don't think at this point, I mean, at this point, I, the, the option is to put that in. I mean, I, I think the crossing guard, you're right, it's, it's not always, it, they, plus, it's still in the middle of the day. When students are crossing the street to go to the art class, we still think that there should be something there to warn drivers that they're coming through. So our goal is to get back that light at this point.
So what's the interim solution?
Is what, is the current situation, is what's going on. We can't put anything in there. So they're, schools providing crossing guards at the busiest times. And other than that, that's where we are. It's, it's not, our hands are tied by the state. It's a state road, we, you know, no authority to do anything else there.
I will say, I, I think that, and I, and again, I want to put this out there just because I, I think that I need to. But this was a project, and, and this is not, again, I, I recognize this has nothing to do with the town council, um, or town administration. But the, this project didn't just appear. And, and we are now, October seventeenth, and well into the school year. And the situation isn't, hasn't been, there isn't much of a res- of a resolution for the, for the problem. And I really do fear that, um, it has the potential for someone really getting hurt. Again, like, I drive that, uh, often in the morning and it's, it's dangerous. And I, and I, I'm concerned about, um, the safety of our kids, so...
Hey, it's, uh, Councilor Burns. Can I jump in for just a second? I don't mean to interrupt. But I, I do agree with everything that's said. And Steve, I, I completely hear you that this is a, um, you know, a state road and we have to abide by those guidelines. I don't know what else we could look into, but, but one huge concern that I have is not only in the morning, but those after-school programs where now it's getting dark. And picking up the kids across the street and having them cross the street without any kind of a, you know, flashing light, it's just a concern. So I don't know what other things we might be able to look at or work with the school board or the superintendent to see just if there's anything we can do to just make it safer.
Yeah, and I, I echo all the concerns I've heard because I, especially in the evening. Visibility there is actually kind of tricky just because of how narrow everything is through that area. So I totally sympathize with all the emails that have been forwarded to us and would hope that the state would allow us to.
Could we, in the, in the near term, for something to try to get some, get past the impasse here? Could, uh, could, could our representatives help us? Maybe reach out to Martha Fuller Clark and see if we can get a meeting between the DOT?
Oh, we're meeting with them. I don't, I don't want to think that we're not.
No, I want a public meeting where the parents can be there.
Yeah, I think the school should set something up with the state reps saying, we, like I said, we're willing to install it.
Right.
And the chief of police can express his concern for safety there.
Right. So I get, get all of the parties sitting in the same room, have a conversation about this and, and people can sort of, if anybody's being unreasonable, they will at least show us that they are being unreasonable and I, I think, you know, people could make their argument.
Dumb question.
Yeah.
I'm full of them. Where is the, I guess, the, the property line for where it's towns versus?
Yeah, you mean putting it on our property versus?
Yeah.
It doesn't matter, still crossing the state lo- road.
So I'm not going to try and solution. I'm just going to, I'm, what I think I would like to see is for interim until, you know, uh, something can be addressed more formally with the state and come to some resolution there on a permanent solution that's really workable. I think we should try to, you know, get focused and creative about some interim solutions. So can we put, you know, a cruiser there to?
There is, there is a cruiser there.
Okay, or can we do public?
But it's not twenty-four hours.
I, I'm just going to list a couple of things to show, like, can we brainstorm some more? These are not, we, we don't need to discuss these options. I'm just going to say, I've thought of that.
Yeah.
I thought of, I've heard of these, um, these techniques where you give people who are crossing the street something highly visible that they pick up as they, before they cross, and they put it in a bucket after they cross. So that it just may, you know, whether it's a flashing tube or, uh, something reflective, whatever, right? Just to make each individual a crossing. Uh, can we, there was something else I thought about. I totally forgot. But that's, my point is, can we try to be, be more, just try, try a little harder to come up with something?
First of all, we are trying hard. I don't, I don't want that out there. The police chief is working extremely hard on this with Public Works Director.
Okay.
So we are trying hard.
I, I apologize if that came off as like, wacky words.
Second of all, I mean, we're just getting this the same time as everybody else.
Okay.
So we're, we're trying to work with the superintendent, some of the things that they're recommending. Like, we didn't get the suggestions that the state gave to this individual. We weren't, the, the staff wasn't forwarded on all these emails. So we're getting them as, they're forwarded to us, the people who are actually going to be doing this. One is to put more streetlights at the area of the crosswalks. We can do that. That's not a, a big deal. We're, that's not, that's easy. Yeah, the flags, we could do that. I don't know how long those will last. From knowing somebody who lived in a college town, they have them and there was a bunch of flags in their room. They don't always last. But we are looking at, that, you know, we're trying to figure out what we can do. So it's, it's just, we're, we're, we are brainstorming on our level.
Thank you.
Yeah.
In the meantime, I'll definitely forward this exchange to all of our state reps and to Senator Fuller Clark. And, you know, see if they're able to do anything.
This is just a continuation of our frustration of our, our main streets being a state road. We can't govern our own roads because the state comes in and does stuff like this. It happened, we knew, everybody who's been here for the Main Street project knew the nightmares we went through there. It happened with the Exeter Road projects, that the, those state roads and they come in and they change the, they follow their rules that are, most of the time, do not make sense for the local government. It's a cookie cutter rule for the state. And it does admit, this, like, for, this is a perfect example of one that makes no sense. It's a crosswalk to get from a parking lot to a school building. Not a cross, not an intersection, not a, uh, a heavily tre- well, not a heavily intersection like, um, one fifty-two and Main Street and Exeter Road. We're just trying to get kids and pedestrians safely from a parking lot to the building. And we, and the, you know, we're, we're still working with them to do that, but it's, again, this is the cookie cutter rules of the state coming down and not making sense at the local level.
I know you said we can't do, um, say, traffic control signage, but what about those giant orange signs that we use for information? Like the hydrant flushing, the voting day? Couldn't even put one of those up in the parking lot, just saying watch out for children?
We could, I mean, it, the problem with...
It's not controlling traffic, but it's huge?
Problem of those, though, is that people become snowblind. After they drive by that many times, they just don't read it any longer.
That's a fair point.
That's why you, the strobe, you don't see it until it comes on.
Right.
So that's why we thought that was the best.
Well, I, I think those strobes are wonderful lights and I think they're effective on our main street. So I would...
They're very effective.
I would, I would say that is, there are a lot of other solutions that we can, you know, we're not going to solve this tomorrow. So some of the other things could be done quicker. But I still like the opportunity to try to make the political system work and involve, we have highly supportive local representatives and Martha Fuller Clark. I mean, I think these are people that have really looked for opportunities where they can serve the community. And I think this is an example of something where a little political pressure is probably appropriate just to make sure that we're all communicating in the best way we can and to find a solution. Because a solution seems to be there, it's just we need to get through this stuff.
Where, I mean, the, the solution was there and...
But not to beat a dead horse here, but, um, when they put in those lights, it was to cross the street for, uh, for the art class. And this is really a different situation. I mean, if you drive through there at seven-thirty in the morning, it's very different than just some kids crossing the road. It's, it's like, you know, when you, when you drive down, downtown and there's people backing out, there's people going across the street and you kind of, you have to have your eyes everywhere. That's what it's like. And so, but with a lot of teenagers. And so I, I just, it just heightens the safety, um, consideration.
But I would assume, and not to get too far into something that other people are working on, but I'd assume that crossing guards can be quite helpful when it is at its, when the heaviest volumes are going on. But the other part of the problem is that there's a whole lot, you can't have a crossing guard there from seven AM till six PM, the whole time.
And you also, I, I mean, and, and this is no offense to anyone, but when the crossing guard is the principal of the high school, it's easy to get pulled into conversations. It's not a crossing guard. You know, like, I, I mean, it, it's just, and that's no fault of the principal, but he's the principal. And so...
People use that opportunity to message.
To go, hey, you know, yeah, hey, mister, you know? And so I, I think that that's, um, you know, it might, it would maybe be a better idea to have a, a parent volunteer or retire, you know, to have someone else be the crossing guard. And I'm, uh, that's...
Right. Well, I think all of these things should be, uh, you know, encouraged. But I, I think we, I think if we want, if we want to get that light back, for at least, we should...
Let us do our stuff and all.
Okay.
Come to the council and give an update.
Okay.
Well, while, I guess, while you do your stuff, I, I guess, that's to echo Council Weinstein and the comment about people volunteering during certain hours. I know how difficult it is for, to get coaches to volunteer. But if it has something to do with safety of the children, then maybe people will, or parents, grandparents, whomever would volunteer to, to stand and work the crossing guard. Tough to do it all day, but could be a, like, interim solution.
Okay. So do we have any closing comments by town councils?
Uh, just a reminder, the Heron Point Sanctuary cleanup will be Saturday, October twenty-seventh from nine to twelve. The gate will be open, so there will be a little bit of parking down there to, for anybody who wants to volunteer and help out. Yes?
Working with Kristen Pichelli, I'm sorry for the butchering the last name. In regards to... regards to getting the candidates night together. So, hoping to get information back on that very soon.
It's important, great, thank you. Seeing no other comments, uh, I think we've covered the agenda, agenda. Our next meeting is, uh, November seventeenth, and, uh, with that, we are, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.